That you want to send in to get put on the agenda, that you copy everybody here. Well, it would be Sharon.
Yeah, or both of us, we're both gonna.
Or both of you, okay.
Yeah, she's lead, but I'm.
Okay, so. Okay, why don't you, we, if you have an idea, you know, I want to look at a policy. Just send a note, I'd like to put this on the agenda. It'll get on the agenda, copy everybody, we'll all know about it and it'll end up on the agenda. I also just want to state out loud, I hope this is a collaborative space where we can just puzzle through policy decisions. I know that there's a body of work where every year we look through the policy handbook and, you know, look at the things that are amended in 1971 and try to make an effort to update them. Coming further down the line, there'll be, there's like a look at some of our policies that have to do with our employment language, it's just, they'll be updated to be a little bit more friendly and less paternalistic and more in line with 21st century practices.
Can I make one plug for staff support?
Yes.
If there are policy changes that you are contemplating, we're happy to help, you know, kind of start with the objective and then figure out where it might go in an existing policy, or how to amend, or to provide drafting support. So you all make the decisions ultimately on all of it, but starting with the, what are you trying to solve and then help, we're happy to help support draft language review of this information.
Awesome, so yeah, so it's, I think it's a great idea always to say like, what are we solving for? And actually, that leads us to our draft field trip policy, which I thought rather than, to your point, rather than reading through, and have you both had a chance to look at that and compare the two, if we could figure out as a committee and with Director Wong, thank you for joining us by the way, with Director Wong's input, you know, what are we, what are we solving for? What is the objective of the policy? And that would be for any given policy too, like what's the objective, what are we solving for? So one of the things that we're trying to solve for is, I think every time we've seen a field trip come through, it feels like it's needless oversight, where it's a function that we could completely farm out to staff, given that there's guidelines that are followed and approvals depending on what the, what the field trip is. Did you want to add anything, Eddie?
Yeah, I just want to note really quick, I have a weird schedule today, right around five. I'm kind of the soccer mom of the family. Hundred percent figuratively, probably fifty percent literally. I have to take my daughter, I need to kind of step away for a sec at five and then I'll be back, so hopefully I can do most of the discussion before then and then I'll join soon after I drop her off for any further discussion. But yeah, I want to kind of, I brought this up because in countless conversations with a lot of school principals, pretty much unanimously have very strong feelings about the field, our current field trip policy, about how cumbersome it is, how it actually, I had some comment, how it actually disincentivizes field trips. I think it's important to kind of know a little history behind it, so our current field trip policy was actually drafted a few years ago. And it started, the, the, the cause, what started the whole thing was, it came from a single parent complaint about a field trip at a particular school that happens yearly. While I don't disagree that there are some issues that need to be resolved, what's best practice is that those issues are resolved locally and immediately with the school, with the principal, et cetera. But instead, the path that was taken was a fix that was applied to the entire district. And, and it, it kind of created a situation where it actually created more cumbersome and more administration for everybody and in fact put a lot of, especially a lot of our DLI capstone projects in danger of no longer existing or being able to function properly. On top of that, the, the, that field trip policy is also violates, violates a lot of what's considered best practices in terms of policy. And, you know, and what's considered best practice in policy is that, you know, you set the direction and then the AD and the subsequent ADs is what shows the how. So the policy is the, the direction, the why, and the AD just determines how. And the reason it's done that way is because things change, right? What may apply 10 years ago doesn't apply today, or there's different things today. And so, you know, like self-driving cars are coming around probably someday, how does that change things, or buses? So what, what I want to capture in this policy, this updated policy, is keeping the, the why of the old policy, which is basically, you know, most important to me is striving to making field trip experiences equitable and accessible, inclusive for all students. Tell me if I'm going too long, but I just.
Yeah, and also safe, right?
Also safe, and that, and I think in consultation with kind of district leadership, you know, I think the, the quote I like to quote is like, a field trip policy should just be about field trips. And, and that's kind of where this is going. And the other thing I also put in here is also more feedback and consultation from school administrators, so if you look in, in field trip approval process, you know, I, I don't want to diminish anything, I want to actually elevate that our risk management department does a lot of things and they, they are to be applauded for how much they have to take on. But this gives them a lot of flexibility to actually be a part of writing the approval process. But it also gives a lot of say to our school administrators. And the, the reason I put this in there is because when things go wrong on field trips, the first people who get called are the principals, right? So they get the feedback, or when the, when the kids come back, you know, and the teachers and the principals give feedback, it usually goes straight to the principal. So usually the principals are the ones that are the most knowledgeable about what is needed and frankly, what isn't needed. And, and so that's why in B I wrote that, you know, these approval procedures not only should be developed in consultation with school administrators, but school administrators ask for exemption for, or, or alternative approval process if there's like special case scenarios and stuff like that. So I think that, that was kind of, sorry, I got the wrong one put up here. Yeah, so that was kind of the point of that. And, and so, yes, so there it is, talk away, let me know what I got completely wrong or whatnot and happy to discuss, thank you.
Thank you, Director Wong. So I think what I'd like to do is like for, in terms of next steps, if it's okay with other committee members, is go back to staff and have them look at recognizing what our objective is. Our objective is to minimize this like undue oversight, to work with building administrators and risk management to come up with a process, you know, and I think it's kind of a tiered process that spelled out like, you know, if it's just to Oaks Park, there's a process and if it's overnight, it's another process, if there's travel involved, et cetera, et cetera. Does that sound? Rather than spelling it out in the policy, again, we want to think about what the objective of the policy is, to reduce oversight, I mean, from the board, and to put it back on kind of on staff. I just wanted to make sure with Director Wong, does that capture?
Yeah, and in fact, this is, the, the reason I wrote the policy this way is because it allows the administrative directive and risk management to be the ones that write the AD, the appropriate procedure, it gives a lot of power to them.
The how to.
Kind of how to do it, right? If you look at the old policy, it's very prescriptive and it may not be best practices anymore. And in fact, in terms of policy, it doesn't follow best practice. So having such a rigid policy creates a lot of, just a lot of burden, and especially when we're talking about lean times, where you have less staff, administrators are asked to do more with less, and having, be able to be responsive to them and take something off their plate that it's, they feel is unnecessary, I think is a huge move. And, you know, one of the reasons I also ran for the board, one of my, I just want to be completely out there, is that, you know, when I was working in the district, what I hear over and over from not just my fellow teachers, but also school principals, is that, you know, I think it's getting better today, but back then, you know, I'm talking about eight, 10 years ago, a lot of them felt that, they, they didn't feel very supported by, by central office. It felt like, you know, the, the role of the central office is supposed to support our schools, not the other way around. And the old policy kind of reflects, what I, what I had trouble with is a very top-down approach, a very, you know, very managerial, top-down authoritarian type of mentality. And I, I wanted to kind of fix that and kind of change the culture of our policies in that we should be supporting our schools. And yeah, and that, that's kind of a huge impetus for me, so thank you for letting me blah, 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 please cut me off if I talk too much.
Thank you, Director Wong.
So I guess I have a question with your suggestion, if we do it this way and send it back to staff, what happens next? Because my thoughts about this, in the law, if you go to change a policy or law, you redline through what you're changing so that people can see what's being changed. And this entire thing would be redlined because we're getting rid of all of it. And we're replacing it with something that frankly is much, much more bare bones than what is there. And so I would like to know specifically what is not best practices? And I'm also looking at the current policy and seeing that anything that happens during the school day doesn't ever come to the board, so it doesn't feel authoritarian, it feels very principal-directed. And for parents, if their school is looking at having the children leave the state, I mean frankly, the policy concerns me if we're allowing people to just go to Washington because there's, implicates federal stuff if things go wrong. But the current policy seems that it only involves oversight if kids are traveling a very far distance or going overnight, both of which seem like they should have some oversight. So I guess I'm, I'm not, I want to know what would happen next.
So as to your redline, yeah, I think common practice I know in this committee is to have a redlined version so you can compare both, and I think that we could arrange for that.
Well, I think, I mean, the whole thing would be redlined because there doesn't seem to be anything that, it's not like we're just redlining a couple words, like the whole thing would be gone and we would be replacing it with something new.
How to respond to that? Oh.
Yeah, I'm curious, yeah.
I did start trying to redline the original one, I ended up crossing off almost everything except for the first paragraph.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and so that's how it started. The, I also want to respond to the, the issue about when, if it's required for board approval for travel that's over, you know, because the original one says the board needs to approve any travel over 150 miles. What actually ended up in practice was more administrative. I think one of the, the reasons for that was to try to oversee, to make sure that opportunities for travel and field trips were equitable across our district. And I completely agree with that, which is why I put in to B, the Board of Education may request an annual report of field trips. The reason that it didn't work out very well in these last few years is because, A, the board only saw travel that was over 150, it didn't, didn't see travel that was 100 miles or 120. And not only that, but a better way to see whether field trips were equitably being offered is for an annual report, actually is to see all the field trips instead of just one by, one by one, or the ones that come before us. So in effect, it didn't work out that way, what we saw. And then the second thing that created a huge issue was that, in order to get before the board required so many steps for schools to take, that it became just really administratively burdensome. Especially because boards, you know, typically we don't vote on stuff, we only vote on stuff once a month. So to get all this stuff planned once a month ahead of time, or, or, sorry, months ahead of time, when things often change, and not only that, but it also requires things like, for example, travel plans sometimes change last minute or whatnot, and it, it also led to certain things with like increased ticket prices, for example, because of the cumbersomeness of, of the approval process. So we tried it for five years, I think, five, six years, and it didn't work out that way. I mean, in terms of like the, the hopeful benefits of it. And so that's why I think, and again, it doesn't say that we don't have to do it that way, that's why it allows the administrative directive to define how things get approved.
I think to just, it's a really good discussion about robust process and board approval, right? And I, I think the, the AD would never tell the board, but it has to, like the, the staff wouldn't, so if you all decide no board approval, there's probably no board approval. But what sits below that is a pretty robust process to vet the itineraries, the chaperones, background checks, insurance coverage, the lodging, the, I mean, there's, and, and that may be able to be streamlined in some other way. I think student safety and compliance with all of the many, many rules about what happens with care for children would still be in place. I think one of the big changes, not the only change, the big one is whether the board approves that or not. And, and there have been varying, I, I agree with Director Wong's history on that, I think there were some board members who wanted it that way because they wanted to approve the field trips, and there were others who used it as a proxy for visibility on the equity front, and there were different viewpoints.
Yes.
But the, I would say, the ultimate sign-off by the board, you're looking at a collection of, you know, records about it, but I, I'm not sure what the, what the ad is in terms of approval. We've never seen them denied because of something that's in the submission, because it doesn't go to the board unless it has all of those things satisfied. And so it is, they did create, it does create a different administrative layer and a time layer for the, the folks traveling. And again, I'm not here to have an opinion one way or the other, I'm just trying to like create the playing field of all the conversations we've had.
Well, say an example, that could be that, just in terms of board oversight, a team that wins, Constitution team wins their state final. And they qualified to be on a plane in two, like a week and a half, but that misses a board.
You have special meetings just to approve.
Right, so then we're gathering four members to approve that. Sometimes it's just like a calendar issue, so clearly there's no planning ahead if a team wins something and you want them to win that thing.
Yeah.
But, or basketball qualifying, something, I don't know. But that's the one thing in terms of timing that I, I'm not advocating for anything, but just an example of something.
I can say I have, we get a stack of paper, it's got the basketball coach's name, it's signed off by multiple people throughout the organization, and it's, we've never denied, so it doesn't seem like it adds an additional, there's no additional like safety level that it comes to the board. It's, it's just a time, a little bit of a time burden because it's already been completely approved by the time it comes to the board. So it seems a little bit performative as well in that way, it doesn't add any additional safety that we see it, it's just that we see it. I don't know if I'm interpreting that correctly.
I think there are different viewpoints and depending on the board composition at the time, I mean, I think they're, I think it is accurate that, that, I, I don't recall a board denying because they were concerned about the safety or that that's the wrong chaperone, or that's not the right flying, or things like that, so.
That's not what I meant, sorry. When I, frankly, the idea of, this policy as it stands allows a school to go to Vancouver without anyone overseeing, which in my mind, as a lawyer, triggers just laws when you cross a state with children. And so there are some things in here that may actually concern me with principals just being able to take kids to Vancouver or Battleground or somewhere without any oversight. But that is a separate issue aside, when I was talking about safety, I was thinking about that because we're crossing state lines with kids without any approval other than just a principal saying, let's go. My thought is not top-down authoritarian, it's the transparency idea that the community is seeing where our schools are going and what our kids are doing, and the community is getting to say, I mean, I can't imagine anybody would say a basketball team won, they get to go to Nationals, or a constitutional team won, they get to go to whatever, Nationals, but they still get to see it. And I think that's the part that I like the oversight for, because I, as I understand the history of this, which was amended in 2019, but has been standing for 20-something years, is because there was a lot of inequity and lack of transparency for the community in seeing what other schools were getting to do. And if the board is approving and it's in, it's coming in a consent agenda, the community gets to see, they get to ask questions, maybe they get to have thoughts about, we could do something like that, it like sort of can spark thoughts and transparency and openness. And so that, that'd be where I'm coming from, in the idea of replacing it entirely.
I guess my question is, is there a better way to achieve that transparency? I don't, I would be really surprised if any members that were like following our consent agenda to look for the field trips to get that visibility. But if we have a meeting where there's a report that's shared, it seems like that achieves the transparency and community input portion in a more accessible way than one, one document within the consent agenda. Because then if they were doing a report on it, that would be before the full board. Anybody watching would like be able to see that full report happen.
I, I guess I would be in favor of seeing a report to kind of look at community-wide, but you, when these reports, when these approvals dribble in, you can absolutely see, I mean, some of our schools have international travel, many of them don't. So you can see the inequity, but in terms of like the burden of having to wait for the board approval, I think is something that the administrators would love to see. And yeah, I, I just, you know, you see these reports and you see who's going to basketball tournaments and Constitution and the Jefferson dancers and international travel. So I, I would, I would benefit by seeing an annual report and for those equity reasons and for transparency with the community, but I don't feel like I have to rubber stamp, you know, as a, as a member of a governing board, every, every field trip. And it looks like, Eddie, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just want to quickly respond to, I mean, that's, that's why the annual report, I mean, we've, we've had a few board members from the, the pass board admit that, oh yeah, an annual report would have been better in terms of trying to figure out if there's inequities and things like that to figure out. And that's part of our duty, especially if we're prioritizing our board goals, to making sure that, that these things are done equitably. The, the big response I want to make is that it, let's just say worst case, or best case scenario, worst or best, that, you know, we just approve this proposal as is, right? That doesn't mean that suddenly principals can just do whatever they want. Our risk management procedures are still in place, we still have plenty of ADs from the old field trip policy that would probably apply to there, but what this does say is that the district needs to determine the approval process, either through the AD or the appropriate risk management procedures. And so it, it, it is already, I mean, what we have in PPS is pretty robust in terms of, of safety and oversight to make sure, sure our kids are, you know, all the check marks are checked out before they go. So I just want to respond to that, it doesn't, it doesn't limit that in any way. In fact, I think it actually makes it, could possibly make it more robust because now it can easily adapt to, for example, new extenuating circumstances, like for example, let's say there's a trip that's not 150 miles, that's maybe 50 miles, but it's to a more dangerous place, you know, whether that's like hiking through a canyon or something like that, right? Then that allows more kind of flexibility in terms of like, oh yeah, our old rules don't really apply to this, we need to kind of adapt some, some, you know, new extenuating services, circumstances that we didn't think of before. So I, I, I just want to put that out there, that this potentially could actually make it more robust, not, but what, what it does do is that it allows the flexibility to be kind of responsive to what our schools and what our, our school administrators need.
Thank you.
So that gets back to my original question, if we send it to staff, I'm not ready to say send it to the full board for first reading.
Agreed.
In part because I just got it yesterday. I know it's been, I'm sure it was in existence longer than yesterday, maybe.
Yeah, it has, but that's okay, we're, we kind of do it right then.
Yeah, like I would, exactly, so I would rather be able to read it and understand where the differences are and what they are.
Um, yes.
Yeah, so I guess what would be the, sending it to staff, what would happen next? It would come back to policy?
So we could do a, a number of things to support the process, we could prepare a summary of the differences, what changed, which might, we'd be happy to do that. When we have direction from the committee about going forward, we can help draft the proposal that would go to the full board. So I think dealing in concepts instead of specific sentences is helpful at this stage. So shall we prepare that summary and circulate it and then it can be?
I think that would be helpful. I mean, I don't know about you, I think it would be helpful to have a summary of what the differences are.
And we can bring in some of the elements of the AD that currently exist, that have a lot of the robust risk management and other processes built in, that might provide some context for that, that's okay, we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I think also, you mentioned, oh, when it comes time, I, I definitely don't feel ready to draft something and send it to the full board because, like I said, I looked at this and realized it was a complete substitution rather than slight finessing.
We couldn't either because you three haven't decided anything yet.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
So the first step is for you to consider and then, you know. Yeah, so give direction to staff and then we can draft in further into your direction.
I like that. So in, in future, whenever we have amendments, they will have redlined.
Good.
So you'll be able to see where the changes are suggested and who suggested them, et cetera. Okay, so Eddie, is that satisfying for you? We're just going to send it back to staff to prepare a summary of where the, the policies are alike and where they're not alike.
Yes.
And bring in elements of the administrative directive as well?
Which is an 11 or 12 page, I'd be sorry.
Yeah, it's robust.
So we can help get the full context, we'd be happy to do that.
That would be great, okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't have it any other way. It would also be nice to have risk management, or maybe someone from risk management to, to also talk about it as well.
Oh yeah, if we could invite, that's great, thank you.
We'll bring Kristin Leeler.
Great. And do we need to hear from principals or building administrators or no? It sounds like we've heard.
I think, I think we should solicit some input from administrators that had to deal with this because I, again, you, you don't have to, you know, don't take my word for it because I, I, a lot of these conversations I had with principals, you know, came up casually, it wasn't like we formally had it. But when it, when it was brought up, there was kind of overwhelming, let's just say, let's say dissatisfaction, to put it kindly, with the current policy.
Okay, if we can, if we can solicit some input, I think that would be great. That way we cross all of the Ts, we dot all of the Is, we have people included, we want people to feel supported in their work.
And just so that I solidify my thoughts, to some of the repeat travel, like we're hoping a PPS school goes to National Constitution Team annually.
Yeah.
There could be fixes that don't affect the overall policy by simply saying, this can be, you know, this is approved annually if it's already approved once, right? So basketball, someone in PPS hopefully is going to move on to states, they get to go, and it's down in Medford, so they don't have to go through the approval process, or someone's going to go out to DC, or, no, like there could be something like that.
Like a standing approval, except that the players change, the players change every year, the chaperones change every year, sometimes the principal, I mean.
The things are proving are really granular, like is it a sufficient housing? Like if the con team's going to go to the coast, it's a hotel versus a rented house, or the chaperones, do they have, are the background checks in and completed? So it, the, the, the place is repeat, but the, the details.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, like maybe that would be sort of an exception, like you don't come back through this process if it's just.
If you're going to LA.
If it's just con team, Nationals.
I think they would always want to make sure they had all of the component parts embedded for insurance and consents and background checks.
What she's saying, the board, I'm telling you.
Yeah, the board, the board, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying like, to the idea that, to the point that like, oh, the kids won basketball and three weeks from now they have to go to Nationals, well, last year they went and last year it was approved, and so it could be an exception within a policy to overcome concern that there would be timeliness issues because we only vote once a month. That's what I'm thinking, like.
I see, sorry.
Every, every, annually, we hope a PPS school is going to go to Conlaw Nationals, and so when they get to Conlaw Nationals, they have the automatic stamp of approval per the exception, like this is a.
Regardless of the school community.
Regardless of the school, regardless of the, the team or the players, it's just the, you know, PPS supports a PPS school going to Conlaw Nationals, wherever it is and whoever's going, like stamped, like, I mean.
But you mean, but you're meaning for the board approval, not for?
Yes.
For the board approval, yes, yes.
I'm talking about our, like, yes, board approval, not the policy. The policy could be amended to say, you don't have to come through board approval. If you find out Tuesday night at 9:00 PM that your team won the basketball championships and you're going to Nashville, 9:30 you can start looking at tickets, you've already got the board approval through the exception in the policy, like, that's how I'm thinking it would be.
But the draft is taking out the need for board approval, right?
Yes, entirely.
Yeah, that's the objective, is to, to move it off of the board agenda and have staff, but I think, I like what you're, you're trying to like, how can we economize? Have staff, but I think, I like what you're, you're trying to like, how can we economize here? Um, I think, so one of the obje- one of the objectives I think I heard is that we want to reduce the time burden on. And, and the administrative burden on having us look at every field trip. And Eddie, you have your hand up?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, I also want to, also request, can we have the policy that was before the twenty nineteen revision? So before this policy.
Oh yeah, this, yes, that's.
And the reason I asked her that is because um, I'm just going to be blunt. Uh, this twenty nineteen policy was specifically targeted at. Asian DLI programs.
Yes.
And the Asian community has been feeling a huge burden from this policy being targeted by them. Uh, creating a whole burden, you know, a lot of extra layers of, of just kind of unnecessary. Uh, work and burden. And expense has been increased, a lot of expense. So, and not only that, but the results from this twenty nineteen policy. Uh. Not directly at least, we haven't really seen any increase in say like, uh, the equitable distribution of field trips or, or safety. You know, we don't have those numbers like, oh yeah, our field trip's safer because of the, the twenty nineteen policy. So. I would like to see the, um, if it was possible to get the policy before the twenty nineteen revision.
We can find that.
Yeah, because I mean, I, when I was a teacher then, it, it worked fine. Uh. People, kids were safe, things were being appro- appropriately. So I, I, I think it's important to also kind of look at. You know, what's the reason for keeping this twenty nineteen? I'm just going to refer to it as a twenty nineteen policy.
Yes.
And there's one component of it that we haven't touched on just for context. And it was that change that was. Concerned with um, trips that were of a certain duration and with kids who didn't go, what is the curriculum back? So that was, that's the curriculum, we'll highlight that, but that was the.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
That was the component part about who stays and who goes and what it, what it means. And, and that's just the. What the issue was, as I recall.
Yeah, it was a, it was a single parent, a single family that. Just curious about. What about my kid that doesn't go on the trip?
I understand, so.
Um, I guess if we're, as part of this summary, then I would love to see the. The list of all trips that are, that happened, this annual report that could be created for us. Presumably has been created. There's a list somewhere of all the trips that happened. I would love to see them for the last. Let's see if, we had twenty nineteen, that's six years ago. I'd love to see them for the last twelve, so we can, ten or twelve, so we could see.
Twelve years?
Like at least ten.
I don't know that we'll have them.
I actually, I, yeah.
Can we just look, is, what's the goal? Is the goal just to see? Like pre-two thousand and nineteen and post, um, to look at.
Well, like, the, what other trips are happening district-wide? Is it, has, have we seen? Since this twenty nineteen, have we seen an explosion in schools doing more stuff?
No, okay. Um, but I think it'd be helpful to go back a couple years and just get a list if we could.
Let me see the data we have. I know that a certain tracking was implemented with the equitable. Field trip fund that the board created a couple years ago. I, I honestly just don't know what was available not before then, but let's see what's, what we have. And we'll report back and bring, bring what we do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's, I mean, it would be interesting to see if twenty nineteen to now, has there been sort of a. Bigger scope of field trips district-wide, or have they kind of been the same?
We have COVID in the middle. I mean, that's a big, that's a big magnet to the caucus in that range, because it just shut things down for. A while. So that'd be, well, but let me see what we have and we can see what the data.
It'd be interesting seeing that too.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll finish my thought by saying if they look exactly the same as pre-two thousand and nineteen and the field trips. Were as robust then as they are now, that's going to change how I'm thinking about everything. So um, that's why I would like to see, like what was happening.
Great, so is that good? Um, we have one more thing to discuss, and that's the plan to review. Current policies, and I touched on a little bit earlier, but that's where just as best practice, we look through that manual to see things that are outdated. Look for outdated language. Um, and just so you know, at the end of every policy, there's a. You can see when it was last amended and it's kind of interesting to go through a policy manual and say. Oh my God, that was nineteen eighty-seven, it was a different world. There was no internet when this was amended last, for instance, so. Um, the other thing I want to bring up, again. Uh, you know, we're, we're, we've got looking at old, uh, current policies. We also have an opportunity to look at new. Policies, and I don't believe we have an AI policy.
Hmm, we do have an AI, it's embedded in the, an AD on acceptable use. I'd be happy to circulate.
Okay, that would be great. Is that um. So yeah, I, I haven't seen that one. I don't remember.
Yeah, it, it was done over the summer and.
Okay, good, so it's like.
Well, and if, yeah, and I think the.
Can you share with us, even?
I think it was, yeah.
Yeah, it, it probably was, but I can recirculate it. That's fine.
That would be great. It, it's in the inbox somewhere.
Yeah, the thinking on AI, because we talked, the policy committee talked about an AI policy early on. Because it's such an act of landscape to Director Wong's statement before about high level. And, and that the policymaking process, as it should, is deliberative, it takes time. The ability to adjust in an AD to changing technologies and practice, to be nimble for what happens in the classroom. Um, we, we, we went to that acceptable use place to embed some pieces. I'm sure it's not that, by the way, this was the first.
Okay.
Um, the, the first shot at it with, it, it, we've talked about it three times today, literally. I'm not even like at the head of AI. District, so it is, there's a lot of work. So I think it's a good, it's a good conversation to have.
Yeah, I'm interested in what, um, you know, we're hearing from students and some parents. Have questions.
Yeah, and the research is constantly emerging.
It's.
This is good, this is good, right?
It's just fascinating, it's really fascinating. Um, so yeah, our current policies, again, the human resources policies, we want to make the. Language more twenty-first century, more, you know, less paternalistic, uh, more, you know, spring the language up to date. Um, and that'll be probably ongoing. Um, I think, is that Sharon will be doing both of that?
Sharon is going to take the lead on that and try to bring them in.
Tranches.
In a, yeah, in tranches, yeah. We, we have tried in the pa- in the past, a lot of our policy and then. I'm sure you'll look at it going, really? You guys have done, I mean, it's amazing how many have been rescinded, just really outdated about. Girls and boys having different expectations for PE. I mean, like really old stuff.
Girls show our skirts.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's really remarkable. So. We've done it on an individual policy basis most of the time. And I think Sharon's approach for this is really smart to take it in bigger chunks. That's, that's less about substance, although there will be some substance, I predict, but it's more about like cleaning up the tone. Reflecting the culture when you read a policy. People who read policies are trying to get it right.
Yeah.
That we are all in this together.
Yep.
Good, good chunks, so.
So, two good questions.
Yeah.
Um, it sounds like someone else is going to send to us what we should look at, not that we have to go through and look at.
True.
Okay, good. Um, and to your point earlier, if we have a policy idea, should we draft something and then send it out or?
You could.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or, or, or talk about the concept. I mean, I, I will say just from a.
Interesting.
Yeah, I mean, there're lots, we've done it lots of ways. I think sometimes starting with specific language, we get. Mired in the language instead of the objective. And so starting with the objective and thinking through what do we want to have it do? And we, meaning all of you and us, helping to, and then putting the language in it. I mean, I will, if Director Renedito is watching somewhere, she and I have gone back and forth on this. She loves to start with the language.
A draft.
You know, she chaired the policy committee, but I kept saying, I really like it, what are we trying to do? And then let's get the language to go. So they're both, both sides work, but you just get, get some remnants of language that doesn't move when it should.
Yeah.
Drafting processes, but we want to get the, the policy substance right, which is what you all want to be. I don't know, that's too much commentary.
So, no, I think, I think that's fine. So does that make, I mean, it makes sense to. If it, you know, I mean, I, I like writing, and so I sometimes like to start by writing. It helps me organize my thoughts. Um, but I guess I was inviting committee members to send in, you know, for instance, I'd like to look at the dyslexia policy. I'd look to, like to look at the safe routes to school or transportation, you know, related policy.
Okay.
So, ideas, I guess, and objectives, and then we can talk about more language.
Another good reason to start with the objective is sometimes the, the, something is covered in several different policies that might be good for you just to know.
Yep.
Oh, or there's work that's not in a policy, whether it needs to be elevated to a policy or it's actually covered in a. In an AD or the employee handbook or a different manual. It's all binding, none of it's discretionary. It's just all that one of board. So, we had a really great experience with Director Sullivan last year, who had a question about something. And so he said, well, let's set up a meeting and. And um, the, the senior team member from OTL came and they talked through what it was and what the work plan was and. Just sometimes that information about where it is and where it sits, like, okay, we don't, we're going to watch it. We're like, I'm basically, we don't need a policy right now. Or, so that's.
I have similar experience just this week.
Yeah.
Where I was like, you know, I want to dig into um, our dyslexia policy. How do we deal with dyslexia? You know, you go to a conference, you learn that there's like twenty percent of the population. Has dyslexia and um, Steph was able to walk me through. Um, what the state requires and how PPS is exceeding what the state requires and. Testing's actually happening not just once per year, but three times a year, all the way up, I think, through seventeen-three. So, it was all news to me, so.
So then, if. Um, so if I have an idea for a policy, rather than just saying I would like this on the next agenda, and then the next agenda, then we say. Now we're going to send somebody to write it?
Like, yeah.
Which has to, which has to Sharon or the.
Yeah, and then it could be written by the next, like if I sent it out today, it could ideally be written in advance of the next. Policy committee, so you could talk about it there. Okay, okay. Somebody can write it, yeah. Got it, okay.
Yes. Yes. Yeah. Yeah, does that make sense? And I think that's all we have on our agenda today.
So we have no public comment?
We did not have any, nobody signed up for those.
Thank you. And the other thing, I just want to, um, it's really important to me to hear from people and so we've. We're going to keep the public comment up on top, so if moms come in and they've got dinner on the stove, they can come in, give their comment, leave.
I prefer to have it at the top too, so.
Yeah, excellent. So, and, and keeping it to two minutes, so.
That's great.
All right, I think we adjourned.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.